Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. The members will take their seats and any visitors retire behind the rail. We appreciate it. And we will have our invocation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Yvonne Yates of Gather the People House of Prayer. She is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Cindy Bass. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
I'd like to acknowledge the President Dow Clark and acknowledge Councilwoman Cindy Bass for the invite, and Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, who is of the family of Edwards. Let us pray. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we have forgiven those who have trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. My Father, my God, we do come by the blood and the name of Jesus. We come, Father God, because we love you and adore you and appreciate you. We thank you for all that you have done and all that you will do. We thank you, Father God, for the city being the city of brotherly love. So, Father God, we ask for a blessing upon our mayor. We ask for a blessing, Father God, upon the city council, everyone. We ask for a blessing, Father God, for the sheriff's department. But, Father God, you asked me, and you said a long time ago, if we ask anything in your son's name that you were granted. So, Father God, there's wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that needs to be granted to the city of council. They need to know that, Father God, that you bring in unity and not division. They need to know, Father God, that they are in love with one another. But in order for love one another, Father God, we need to learn to love ourselves. And when we learn to love ourselves, then we begin to love God first, love ourselves, and then others. Father God, we're in a situation today when all need to come together as one. We're in a situation today that the enemy thinks that he came to kill, steal, and destroy, but you came that we may have life and have it more abundantly. So, we bring life instead of death. We bring love, Father God, instead of hatred. We bring unity and oneness among all that is here and all that is out there. For the enemy thinks that he has taken the city of Philadelphia, but no, he hasn't. No, he hasn't. He hasn't taken the city of Philadelphia. Because, Father God, you are inside of us. Greater is he that is in us than he that is in the world, and you have not given us any fear. You have not given us any fear, for fear comes from the evil one himself. For you have not given this fear the fear, but a power and a love and a sound mind. So, we take that power by the blood and the name of Jesus, Father God. We know that violence that has come through this city, Father God, we know that the hatred is in this city, but we take authority today, don't we? We take authority today, and we say that it's not going to happen anymore. We cover our children with the blood, because children are an inheritance unto you. They are your inheritance, God. We cover our men, Father God, because our men have the seed, and Satan wants to destroy that. We won't allow it. We won't allow it, Father God. So, because let my speech be with great season with salt, so that we know how to answer another. Father, we are here because we need you. We're here because we want you. We're here, Father God, because there is nothing that we can do without you. And, Father, we are one nation under God. So, we give you back your authority, because we have not, because we ask not. So, I'm asking for peace. I'm asking for love. I'm asking for joy. I'm asking for oneness. I'm asking for unity among us all. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor, for those inspiring words. Council will be at ease. Thank you again, Pastor. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 31st, 2019, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 31st, 2019 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. At the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 31st, 2019 stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that Journal is approved. And the next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, request of leave of absence today is requested by Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Councilman, leave shall be granted. Let the record reflect that. And the Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down and witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you being here. We hope that your stay here is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you so much for being here. Yes. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to recognize a student that's with me today. She's shadowing me, and I'm trying not to ruin her interest in politics.
Okay.
And she's a senior at Friends Central, and she's actually going to be with us for two weeks in May as her senior project, because she has an interest in government, and hopefully after those two weeks, she'll still have that. So, I just wanted to welcome, she's sitting over there with my chief staff, Jessica Hornstein.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down today and think real hard about the political thing. Thank you. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger, who presented a resolution honoring the Boy Scouts of America. With Dan Templer and those accompanying him, please join the Councilmen at the podium. And joining... And in joining Councilman Taubenberger, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, and Councilman Green. Councilman Johnson. And... Councilman O'Neill. Folks, could we have a little quiet, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, honoring and recognizing the Boy Scouts of America on its 109th anniversary.
Whereas, the Boy Scouts of America was founded on February 8th, 1910, by William D. Boyce, after being inspired to create the organization when he became lost in London and received help from a British Boy Scout, and...
Whereas, the Boy Scouts of America works to promote community values in scouts from a young age by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law, and...
Whereas, the scout law encourages scouts to be trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent, values that can be adopted by all youth and adults.
Whereas, scouting is more inclusive than ever with character building, leadership development, outdoor skills training, service-minded initiatives, and more than serving more than thousands of families throughout our region, and...
Whereas, the Cradle of Liberty Council, Boy Scouts of America's time-tested, life-changing scouting programs are made possible through the selflessness of its network of more than 4,000 volunteers, hundreds of chartered partner organizations, and generous contributions from its donors, and...
Whereas, this dedication to the youth of Philadelphia is paramount to the continued development of the city's younger generations who will become the future leaders.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that we hereby honor, recognize, and celebrate the 109th birthday of the Boy Scouts of America.
And the Chair recognizes Mr. Templer for remarks. Who's giving?
Wow, what a great day to be a scout. On behalf of the over 16,500 scouts served by the Cradle of Liberty Council and over 4,000 right here in the city of Philadelphia, we thank the city council for this wonderful recognition and for the validation of the impact, the profound impact that scouting programs have on the lives of young people. As you recognize us today and for our achievements, we all stand and salute you. As leaders of this great city, we know that you work tirelessly to improve the lives of every Philadelphian, and today we recommit ourselves to our steadfast support of that effort. We, as the Cradle of Liberty Council, Boy Scouts of America, pledge to be a continued partner in your efforts. We know that in your various districts, you have hundreds of wonderfully dedicated adults who are looking and searching for ways to help to be a positive influence in the lives of the young people in their neighborhoods. As city council members, you now have the opportunity to serve as a conduit to bring together those passionate adults and the 109-year program and history of the Boy Scouts of America to be just that. Today, it is a great day to be a scout, and as we work together to reach more young people in the city of Philadelphia, tomorrow will be even better. Thank you very much for this recognition.
Council will be at ease. Thank you, and congratulations to the scouts. Our next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on February 6th, 2019, I signed the following bills, which were passed by council at a session on January 24, 2019. Bill numbers 171112, 180893, and 180992A.
Is that it? Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to introduce this resolution and delighted to say that the co-sponsors are council members Alan Dom, Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, and Councilman Derek Green. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the city treasurer's office on the leadership of city treasurer Rashia Johnson and the reconciliation task force for the successful reconciliation of the city's bank accounts.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill and one privileged resolution, co-introduced by Councilwoman Gim, Oh, and Squilla.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Milner Street from Duncan Street to Orthodox Street.
Refer to committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and celebrating the Asian-American community in Philadelphia on the occasion of the 2019 Lunar New Year.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan. I'm sorry. Councilman Johnson. Councilman, have any bills?
Council President, I have... Two privileged, two non-privileged resolutions, but also on behalf of Councilman Curtis Jones, I have a non-privileged resolution as well.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Aging to hold hearings on the potential for abuse in the guardianship appointment process and the financial burdens that such abuse could have on individuals being placed into guardianships.
And that will be on this week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform to hold public hearings to examine adequate solutions in addressing the specific needs of incarcerated women.
Also on this week's calendar...
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to pass Senate Bill 14, which seeks to enhance public safety and further justice by ensuring that probation decisions are fair and consistent.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kionne Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Cecil B. Moore Avenue from Front Street to Sixth Street westbound.
Refer to committee.
And an ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Montgomery Avenue from Second Street to Front Street eastbound.
Also refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill today.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance submitting Chapter 21,000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Political Contributions and Expenditures to add and make changes to provisions regarding campaign contributions, contributions to transition and inauguration committees, and campaign finance disclosures.
And that will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Marvine Street and Champlin Street, North 12th Street and Chu Avenue, Comac Street and Chu Avenue, North 12th Street and Champlin Street, North 9th Street and Ruscombe Street, North Marvine Street and Champlin Street Avenue.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution declaring February 2 through 11, 2019, as National Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action in the city of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Chris Long for his incredible charitable work and congratulating him for winning the NFL's 2018 Walter Payton Man of the Year Award.
And that will be in this week's calendar...
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Boy Scouts of America's 109th anniversary.
This week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance granting permission to a licensed tour vehicle operator to operate on the west sidewalk of South Independence Mall West, formerly Sixth Street, between Randsted and Chestnut Streets, a location formerly operated by Ride the Ducks Sightseeing Tours, an existing prefabricated metal ticket booth and merchandising kiosk with signage, including an electrical conduit with an electrical service line and telecommunications conduit with a telephone service line in and under the public right of way.
Refer to committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. We offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Oh.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer one privileged resolution co-sponsored by council members Heenan and Bass, one resolution on your behalf, and one bill may be heard after the title of the bill is read.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance submitting Title II of the Philadelphia Code entitled City-City Consolidation, Chapter 2300, Property Assessment by adding new language to Section 2304, Office of Property Assessment, Chief Assessment Officer, powers and duties, requiring that the real estate taxes imposed by Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections, Chapter 19, 1300, Real Estate Taxes, be levied on the assessed value of taxable real property as established for the immediately preceding stated year in any year in which the audit provided for under subsection 2, 305, subparagraph 2, subparagraph S, finds that overall property assessments in the city do not meet industry standards for accuracy.
Chair recognizes Councilman Oh.
Thank you, Council President. There has been much controversy over the property assessments by the Office of Property Assessment, OPA, and this body, yourself, and Councilman Squilla in particular, have offered and produced remedies for homeowners and others. I will say that my concern is that we have, over the course of several years, questioning OPA, at least from my perspective, not getting a satisfactory answer as to the accuracy and methodology of the assessment process, leaving many areas of the city over-assessed in many senses. Now that this has been brought out, the administration says they will not move forward with property assessments on a citywide basis. They will do it on an individual basis, but that leaves the 10.5% overall assessment increase on residential properties intact. I'm not sure how we can keep that intact when we have just had an audit that says the methodology is inaccurate. It would seem to me that a lot of people, especially people who are less informed from poorer neighborhoods, have not appealed, and therefore they'll be stuck with an assessment that appears to be inaccurate and unreliable. The bill I offer for our consideration is that when an audit of the property assessment process has found it to be unreliable, rather than freezing the process at the questionable or unreliable rate, that we go to the previous year. And so, for anyone who has or hasn't appealed their property assessments, we would go to the year before, rather than keeping the questionable year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. That will be referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution declaring that the third week of March shall be Martial Arts Week in the city of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar...
And a non-privileged resolution designating the office within city council that currently serves the needs of veterans and their families as the Office of Veterans Affairs, confirming the continuing responsibility of the Veterans Advisory Commission... And a non-privileged resolution designating the office within City Council that currently serves the needs of veterans and their families as the Office of Veterans Affairs, confirming the continuing responsibility of the Veterans Advisory Commission to provide assistance to that office and amending and restating Resolution Number 060059 as amended by Resolution Number 070094 to further provide for the powers and duties of the Veterans Advisory Commission.
And that will be on next week's calendar. That concludes our introductory bills and resolutions. In our next order of business is report from committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Finance, which is referred Bill Number 190004, entitled an ordinance submitting Chapter 19, 2900 of Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Senior Citizen Low-Income Special Tax Provisions, by extending the deadline for low-income seniors to apply for a refund or forgiveness of real estate taxes. Respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 190004.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 190004. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. This bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports three bills and two resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read the report.
The Committee on Law and Government, which is referred Bill Number 180820, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home or Charter to change certain gender-specific references to gender-neutral references, as approved by Resolution of the City Council. And Bill Number 180943, entitled an ordinance submitting Chapter 9, 1100 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Fair Practices Ordinance, Protections Against Unlawful Discrimination, by adding a new section prohibiting retail establishments from refusing to accept cash as a form of payment. And Bill Number 190007, entitled an ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home or Charter, establishing and defining the responsibilities of the Office of Immigrant Affairs. And Resolution Number 180834, entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home or Charter to change certain gender-specific references, such as councilman, councilmen, and councilmanic, to gender-neutral references, such as councilmember, councilmembers, and council. And Resolution Number 190028, entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home or Charter to provide for the creation of an Office of Immigrant Affairs, to provide for the powers and duties of such office, and to otherwise provide for the incorporation of the office into the city government, and providing for the submission of the amendment to the electors of Philadelphia. Respectfully reports it as considered the same and returns the attached bills and resolutions to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 180820, 180943, and 190007.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 180820, 180943, 190007. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Resolution Number 180834 and 190028 will be placed on the final passage calendar at our next session of council. That concludes our reports on the committee. The next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee was the suspension after rules have been deemed have had their first reading. They will be on the second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolution and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 190064, 190065, 190076, 180888-A, 180993, and 170467. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you. Before considering the bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, you may sign up at the table to my left when your name is called. You'll go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, we would ask that you give 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. I want to thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Dr. Patrick P. J. Brennan. Commenting on 180888-A.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. I'm Dr. Patrick J. Brennan, Chief Medical Officer of the University of Pennsylvania Health System. I'm here to provide testimony on behalf of Penn Medicine in support of Bill Number 180888-A. The bill requires pharmaceutical sales representatives to register and share their promotional materials with the city. Most importantly, it also bans manufacturers of controlled or federally-scheduled drugs from giving gifts of any kind, large or small, to doctors and healthcare providers. Opponents of this important legislation have made a number of claims in order to stall and defeat it. They claim it will have little impact on the opioid crisis and that there is little evidence to demonstrate that gift bans are effective. They claim that the rate at which opioids are dispensed is falling and that relatively small gifts like meals should not be prohibited because they don't influence physician decision-making. Let's discuss the facts. Decades of study make it clear that meetings between doctors and sales reps lead to changes in the way physicians prescribe medications. And let's be clear about this. These meetings are about sales, not education. It's not necessary to reinvent the wheel here. We know that banning meals changes interactions with physicians. Why would it be any different for opioid prescribing? As we begin to grapple with years of over-prescribing, rates are just now starting to decline, but it's far too soon to declare victory. We're a long way from there, and we need to continue our work to address over-prescribing. The authors of a study just published last month in the Journal of the American Medical Association using county-level data from across the country demonstrated that an increase in marketing of opioids was associated with more overdose deaths in those counties one year later. The authors further conclude that it is the widespread payment of gifts of low monetary value to many physicians that are most influential. The industry spends tens of millions of dollars per year marketing directly to doctors. Opponents claim this bill would be bad for business, leaving Philadelphia on the outside looking in as pharma industry opportunities pass the city by in favor of friendlier rules elsewhere. Let's consider the facts again. Penn Medicine banned pharmaceutical company gifts to our clinicians nearly 13 years ago, and collaboration with the industry has continued to flourish since then. Discoveries developed in our laboratories and tested in clinical trials are finding their way to more patients each day, proving that academia-industry collaborations are bearing fruit more than ever before. In fact, of the 40 FDA drug approvals in the last fiscal year, four, or 10%, were made possible by research conducted in West Philadelphia at Penn Medicine. At Penn Medicine, we trust our physicians and healthcare providers to act in the best interest of our patients, and we allow industry representatives to meet with our providers, but the patient's best interests are primary. We're interested in the development and sharing of new knowledge and the creation of new products to benefit humanity and not marketing persuasion on our prescribing practices. We prohibit gifts, however, small, because independence, transparency, and trust are crucial in the patient-provider relationship. In conclusion, Philadelphia has the opportunity to be a leader by implementing common sense safeguards to limit activities that have been shown through scientific research to encourage inappropriate or over-prescribing. On behalf of Penn Medicine, I can speak from experience that the benefits of a proposal like the one before you today far outweigh any perceived shortcomings. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Sharon Brigner. Commenting on 180888-A.
Hi. Hi, my name is Sharon Brigner. I'm a registered nurse here on behalf of the Bio Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America Pharma, and we oppose the bill.
Thank you for your testimony.
Chris Mullenau. Commenting on 180888-A.
Morning. Good morning, members of City Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak during today's council meeting. I'm Chris Mullenau, President and CEO of Life Sciences Pennsylvania, the statewide trade association that represents more than 800 member organizations, including small biotech companies, pharmaceutical manufacturers, academic research institutions, including the University of Pennsylvania, Temple, and Jefferson, medical device makers, patient advocacy groups, and service providers that support this industry. On behalf of that community and our membership, we oppose this bill. As we know all too well, the opioid epidemic is one of the worst public health crises our country has faced in the past century. Its effects are far-reaching and community-agnostic. And I'm sure every one of us in this room has personally felt the consequences of this ongoing emergency. I want to make it clear from the outset that the life sciences community of Pennsylvania is committed to doing everything in its power to curb this tragic epidemic. In fact, a number of our member companies are working on novel, non-opioid medicines to treat chronic and acute pain, as well as tamper-resistant delivery modalities for these medicines. Additionally, as a public advocacy organization, working to address this issue has been one of our top priorities for several years in discussions with legislators at the state and federal levels. There are five provisions, five key provisions of this bill that are particularly troublesome. The first is the requirement that pharmaceutical sales reps register and pay up to a $250 registration fee. It's important to note that 87% of the medicines that are prescribed, the opioid medicines that are prescribed, are generic medicines and don't have much of a sales force at all, so this would accomplish nothing. It's nothing more than a thinly veiled tax. The second provision that Dr. Brennan just talked about was banning gifts to physicians, and specifically in the bill, it cites mugs and pens. These are already prohibited by the Pharma Code of interactions with physicians. In fact, they've been banned for 10 years through that code. There are warehouses across New Jersey and Pennsylvania full of pens and mugs that are not going to those offices. A third provision would prohibit meals, and the idea that meals influence prescribing behavior is not only insulting to physicians, but it's absurd at its face. Meals, I'll give you an example. We usually use anecdotes in these hearings. A friend of mine was diagnosed recently with gallstones. After his diagnosis, he was given a prescription for 10 oxycodone. He needed two of them. His wife picked up the prescription. She showed no identification. Their address was incorrect. She walked out with the 10 oxycodone. In fact, they gave her 11 accidentally. After his surgery a week later, they gave him another prescription for 20 oxycodone. He needed three of those. This has nothing to do with a bagel or a cup of coffee given to a physician. Finally, to submit information, the bill provides a provision that requires manufacturers to submit their marketing material to the Department of Health. These materials are already reviewed by the FDA with an annual budget of $5 billion. Not sure about the Department of Health's budget or capabilities to review these materials, but we don't believe they need to be reviewed again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Peter Bentegna. Commenting on 180888-A.
Morning.
Good morning. My name is Peter Bentegna. I'd like to thank Council for allowing me to speak this morning. Regarding Bill 180888 restricting the activities of pharmaceutical representatives and also specifically addressing the selective studies and comments from Penn this morning, I'd like to say it is admirable that City Council leaders Councilman Greenlee and Councilwoman Bass are trying to stem the opioid epidemic in Philadelphia. I'm very empathetic to the patients and families struggling with addiction and loss. This is a serious problem. I'm here today to help City Council help those families, and at the same time, I'm also here today to save my job and my colleagues' jobs. Like 98.5% of all pharmaceutical representatives, we have nothing to do with the opioid crisis or narcotics, and over 94% of us carry no drug with any risk whatsoever of addiction. We live, work, and act with integrity and decency and trust, as you all do at your jobs. If you and 98 others of your colleagues would not want to lose your job because a politician in Harrisburg or Washington or Virginia has transgressed, then you agree that I and my colleagues should not have our jobs taken from us. For expediency, I will briefly explain that the bill will cause us to lose our jobs because simple meals are the setting of choice by which most doctors choose to be educated about the overwhelming and ever-changing volume of information about all drugs, diseases, guidelines, laws, insurance influences, et cetera. The meal is simply but critically a necessary stopping point where and when most doctors ask us to provide education. If meals are disallowed, as they were in other cities, then our companies will remove our positions from the company as they did in those cities. It does not matter that in an admission of oops, we got it wrong, those cities later retracted that legislation. To begin, nowhere in the bill or supportive documents does it say, nor can it say, what are the causes or solutions of the opioid crisis, because nobody in the country has the answer yet to either the causes or solutions. In the last three to 10 years, representative numbers, spending, and activity have decreased each year. Opioid prescriptions have gone down each year since 2016. Yet the opioid crisis has grown and increased in that timeframe. The entire premise of the bill, that degenerate representatives are the main cause of the opioid crisis, is truly as false as it sounds. Also, by the bill's own acknowledgement, similar restrictions legislated in Washington, D.C., Chicago, and most recently, New Jersey, have been resounding failures. I called City Council members in those cities and asked two simple questions. Did their legislation restricting pharmaceutical representatives have any impact in reducing the opioid crisis, and what was the impact of the legislation on business income and tax revenue from their city? The answers were consistent and foretelling for this City Council. Exact quotes that I was given by City Council officers in those two cities are, quote, "This legislation had no impact on the opioid crisis. We still have a similar crisis to the rest of the country." No, no, no. It, the legislation, didn't reduce the opioid deaths or crisis. Quote, "We have been having increasing struggles with our budget," and quote, "Specific to the hospitality and restaurant industry, reported loss of jobs, income, and overall business." Einstein said the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. I thank you for your time and kind considerations of me, my colleagues, and our families, and those in the city who depend on us for education and support.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Emmanuel Bussey.
Morning.
Good morning, Council President, members of City Council. I want to start the way I always start, by acknowledging that this is the brightest, the most technology-savvy, competent council that we've ever had. My name is Emmanuel Bussey, for the record, commenting on 1900040, I believe, the oversight or...
Two-seven.
All right. So I'm going to begin with, I'm going to talk about oversight and inquiries, but I'm going to begin with a little, just a brief, maybe one minute of history. The year was 1991. I was working on one campaign, Rodney Jamison. Darrell Clark was working on another campaign, John Street. It was three women running against one man. On Election Day, Frank Oliver, who was the war leader at the time, told Darrell Clark's team he can't pass out literature on 29th Street. Me, working on an opposite campaign, not being able to mind my business, not seeing that was fair, threw the literature away of the campaign I was working on and immediately started working on Darrell Clark's campaign on Election Day. The rest is history. I became constituent service. I became the designated war leader for the 29th War for John Street. Darrell Clark and I worked in John Street's office doing constituent service. Whenever I got off work, we became good friends. I share that to say that the reason I did that, because I didn't think it was fair for a war leader to tell Darrell Clark's team he couldn't pass out literature. So fast forward to 2019, I'm now opposing my good friend, who now believes I'm not his friend, because I don't believe it's fair for him not to hold a hearing on on-street parking. I don't believe it's fair for him to have one set of rules for Sherrell Parker and move her bill out of a committee when it was being held up, and not move David O's bill out of committee when it's being held up. I just think it's unfair to have two sets of rules for two different council people. I don't think it's fair. And me, again, not being able to mind my business, have encouraged 65 community activism leaders to also join me and say that's not fair. Speaking of oversight, imagine if your congressperson would not perform oversight on Donald Trump. Imagine how outraged you would be if that body of Congress would not perform oversight on Donald Trump. We now have a sitting council person that's indicted, and what we're asking this body to do is to have oversight. Your charter gives you that power to do oversight. Your charter gives you that power to do oversight. Section four, Chapter four, Section two dash four-zero, gives you the power to do oversight. We call on this body, the most intelligent, sophisticated, tech-savvy, integrity-driven body that council have ever had, to do oversight. The people demand it. We deserve it. You should do it. Imagine if Congress told, imagine if Congress told you, "I'm not going to do oversight on the Trump Committee, on the Trump Administration." You would be outraged. So we're asking you guys to do oversight, to allow the Ethics Committee to look into Local 98 and its conduct, its tentacles, and how far it reached into our local government and to our economy. All we're asking is for oversight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Commenting on 170408.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm here to speak for Idris Guithan. He had to get away and get back to school, an outstanding student. I'm going to read a statement that, for him. We also want to say that we are here, I'm here from Community College, to support the education bill that was brought up, resolution. The statement that I'm going to read is by Hazim Hardeman, and some of you may know him because he is now a Rhodes Scholar who went through Community College. "I understand that the board and the college administration is making proposals to the faculty and staff that they believe are in the best interests of CCP students. Respectfully, I can tell you that from my experience studying at the college, that an increase in workload for faculty would have meant an inferior education for me. Not having teachers who had to contend with overly burdensome teaching loads, I was able to receive individualized instruction both inside and outside of the classroom that not only greatly contributed to my development as a student and thinker, but was vital considering I and countless other students entered the college with differing levels of preparedness."
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
Do me a favor. Just mention the word suspension once. I know you're not talking about what you enlisted. Just say suspension, for the record.
I'm sorry, sir. I didn't understand.
You signed up for school suspensions, and you're speaking about Community College, but just say the word suspension. Just do me a favor.
Suspension.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thought I did something wrong. Okay. All right. All right. At Temple University, for instance, a professor with a teaching assignment and no research responsibilities only teaches twelve credits a semester. The same is true at other area universities such as Drexel. At Temple, this allowed me to develop close relationships with professors, which provided, which proved to be fundamental to my achievement, as it was they who recognized opportunities and possibilities for me that I could not envision for myself. If the college is serious about providing a world-class education, they have to at least keep up with respectable institutions on their home turf. Furthermore, if the college is as committed to making, my story, a staple of what CCP represents, okay, as a subsequent celebration of accomplishment suggests, then it must avoid making decisions that would undercut the conditions of that possibility. A fifteen-grade teaching load at the college would do just that. The students whose parents can afford it comparatively well-supported faculty and staff at Temple, Drexel, and Penn, and Oxford. The kids who can't get overworked faculty and staff at community colleges, please fight this reality.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Joe Dennehy. Commenting on 181005A, 190076, 181044.
Morning.
Morning. This is official decree of the people, and writ mandam misquoar warranto, as such, requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Dr. King protested with a sign that said, "I am a man." To be allowed to own, will, inherit, and sell your property whenever you want, or wherever you want, is a guarantee provided in constitutions and laws. Inversely, having your forty-two USC, nineteen-eighty-two property rights stolen is a clear sign of slavery. In fascism, socialism, and communism, property rights revert to the government. The Constitution requires the federal government guarantee a republican government. Picking neighborhoods to forcibly redevelop is unconstitutional and violates your sworn oath. Amendment domain requires government purchase property for public use. Taking without just compensation first made or secured is unconstitutional. Why is the DA, the Attorney General, refused by numerous filings to investigate and prosecute oath, constitution, law violations? The constitutions require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC, nineteen-eighty-two, nineteen-eighty-three, nineteen-eighty-five, nineteen-eighty-six, nineteen-eighty-seven, eighteen USC, two forty-one, two forty-two, twenty-three-eight-one, twenty-three-eight-four. PA Constitution, Article one, through sections one through twenty-eight, twenty-six. PACSA, seven oh-three, seven oh-five, seven oh-eight, seven oh-nine, seven eleven, seven twelve, seven thirteen, seven sixteen, nine oh-two, and other laws listed in SCOTUS, fifteen eighty-nine, sixty-five, fourteen one three three oh, fourteen four oh five six, appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate, prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, ten thirty-eight West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given forty-two USC, nineteen-eighty-two property rights for twenty-five years is egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter government revoked until constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act, any more than a fireman can refuse to fight a fire. The sovereign people require oath, constitution, and law be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath, constitution, or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow this monumental corruption.
Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman, one for the record.
Yes, Mr. President. We have decided that we will be calling up Bill number 181044. Is that all right?
Yes, ma'am. Just wanted, for the record, that we will be calling that bill 181044.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, we will now continue with our calendar. And Mr. Decker, if you can please read the title of 190064.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania State Legislature to pass Governor Wolf's proposal to raise the minimum wage to $12 an hour, with a pathway to $15 an hour for all workers in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Chair-recognized Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 190065.
A resolution urging the Trump Administration to maintain federal mercury and air-toxic
Chair-recognized Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, I again move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution 190065 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 190076.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of fifty-four twenty-three through twenty-seven Lena Street, located in the Eighth Councilmanic District.
Chair-recognized Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. 190076 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 18088A.
An ordinance submitting Title VI of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health Code, by adding a new chapter, six twelve hundred, entitled Pharmaceutical Sales and Marketing Practices, to provide for registration of pharmaceutical manufacturer agents and certain other requirements, and to prohibit gifts by pharmaceutical manufacturers and their agents to healthcare practitioners.
Chair-recognized Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask everyone to bear with me a little bit. I'm under the weather here. But I didn't take any medication, just for the record. I just, you heard from Dr. Brennan from University of Pennsylvania to start off today. And I just want to read in a commentary he put, just in the very beginning, the few, first couple of sentences, to start off where we're kind of coming from on this. Dr. Brennan says, quote, "Imagine walking out of your doctor's office, just as the pharmaceutical sales rep is walking in. The rep shows up with lunch for your doctor and the staff, and his carrying brochure is about a medication your doctor just prescribed for you. It would make you wonder, wouldn't it? Am I about to start a treatment that my doctor thinks is best for me? Or is this a product of someone's free lunch?" Unquote. And when you see that, I think you get worried. And then when you know, through multiple studies that the doctor quoted and others, that oftentimes that over-prescribing comes because of the gifts or the meals that, even if it's small, and some of them are not small, I'm going to get into that in a minute, that the doctor provided, and you would, I think you would get really worried then. Then I think you'd start to get angry, when you know that that, that prescription then led to people getting on, getting addicted, and getting that slow fall down the hill into addiction, and maybe being one of one hundred people a month. And I'm going to repeat that a few times. One hundred people a month, approximately, die from overdoses in the city of Philadelphia. So, you know, and Councilwoman Bass and I introduced this bill. And I know there's some question, is it administration bill? Is it, whose bill is it? Well, I think we're proud to say it's our bill. And it's our bill because it's the right thing to do. Excuse me. And all we're asking is that doctors reg, I mean, I'm sorry, pharmaceutical reps register after the fact, give in their information, so we can stay ahead of the problem. And that's the whole idea behind this bill, to stay ahead of the problem, and bar any kind of enticement to the doctor. And that is for controlled substances and what they call psychoactive medications, things that can become addictive. And it seemed to me, and I said, I know I said this in December, it seemed to me like a no-brainer. Why would you, why would you even want to question that the medicine you're getting is for the right reasons, and not because of some enticement? And I'm not saying every doctor prescribes, over-prescribes to hope people get addicted. I'm not saying that. But the results are the results. The studies are the studies. And a hundred people are dying a month. But, you know, as I said before, the Councilwoman and I, we just wanted to deal with the facts. We just wanted to show the, and try to get the right thing done. The Councilwoman, as the Chair of the Public Health Committee, twice continued a hearing so that we could try to work something out. We held the bill in December from the full council to try to work something out. And I know you, that was at your request also. But we found out pretty soon we were being played. That wasn't an honest discussion. At the first meeting, Fauna and some of their, some others came in, they didn't even provide any written amendments, any, any change. Basically, just tried to talk us out of doing it. When we, when that was clear, then they went the opposite direction. They came in with all kind of amendments, most of which either would make the bill pointless, or just had nothing to do with the bill. And we made a pledge at that moment, look, we will keep working with you, but this bill should go forward, and we'll work on reasonable amendments. And last week, we put in reasonable amendments. We cut the medications down to only fifteen percent of the drugs that are out there being prescribed. Fifteen percent, the most dangerous drugs. You know, we, and we took out any references, any concern that this could affect conventions. But apparently, that wasn't enough. And, you know, pharma, to me, my humble opinion, but I'll stick to it, they knew they couldn't win on their own. So they pulled other people in, other people that maybe didn't even need to be in this. IBX, the Convention Center, the visitors' people, all that, because they thought, well, maybe that could stop this bill. Because that's all they wanted to do. They weren't, they went into an honest discussion. They just wanted to kill this bill and, and show that, show who got the power in this city. And, well, we weren't going to go with that. We were going to keep fighting for this bill. And I don't know where it's going to go today. A lot of members are betwixt and between. I just hope they think about it a little bit more, and I'm going to keep repeating, a hundred people a month die from overdoses. Real people. And speaking of real people, just today, a friend of mine said, her cousin, mother, four children, went in for knee surgery, got overprescribed. Now she's somewhere in Kensington, I don't even know where the hell she is. And they think the next time they'll see her is in a cemetery. That's just one example. I'm going to give a couple more as we go on. And I'm sorry I'm taking a lot of time, and maybe you're lucky because my voice might give out before I'm finished. But this is important, because we're talking about people. We're talking about people, and we're talking about reality here. That's the reality out there. People are dying. And with all due respect to our friends in the hospitality industry, I just have a real concern with a couple of things they said in a letter. Because first of all, they, they keep talking, and see, this is what you do when you try to oppose a bill. I know, we've been around a little bit. You don't talk about the real issue. You talk about over here, and up there, and under here, and on the side. Okay? And that's what they keep trying to do. And one of the things that is in the letter, from Julie Coker Graham and John McNichol, good people, doing their job over there, is that it should be limited to opioids. Now, how many times, and I think we've gone on record a number of times, saying, this isn't about, just about opioids, in fact, it's more about other addictive drugs that are coming up. If we limited this bill to opioids, I think it's the equivalent of saying, we put a smoke detector in the building after it caught fire. Because the opioids are out there. This bill will not stop most of that. In fact, opioid use has already gone down a little bit, because they've been out there so long. We're trying to get the, the next, and the next line of addiction taken care of. And she, it is also written in this letter that this bill, although right-minded, is false-promising. I don't know what that means. We never said it was the solution to the whole problem. We said we would sit down and talk about other things, but we didn't false-promise anything. We didn't say it was a total solution, but we said it will have an effect. And experts say it will have an effect. And I think they know a little bit more than, in all due respect to visitors' people do. You know? And then they, they said they will work to enact real change. Well, this is real change. This is a start. It's not, it's not the end, but it's a start. And, but what we keep hearing is, oh, we'll sit, we'll study, we'll do a committee, we'll do this. And I just remember Councilman Jones's statement about paralysis by analysis. That means nothing gets done for a long time. And, may I repeat, a hundred people die a month. Now, these people, you know, Julie and John and all the good people, they have their own lenses, and I understand that. They got to worry about what they see. First of all, I don't see why this bill, because again, we took out any reference to conventions. This bill, they shouldn't even be in this anymore. This is over, as far as they're concerned. We took care of their problem. But the reason they're still in it is the pharmaceutical industry is threatening that just because we have the audacity in this city to put some regulations in against them, that they might not come here anymore, and they could ruin our economy. That's the kind of people we're dealing with? We're going to get held hostage by those folks? But again, these folks have their, you know, Julie and John have their, their lenses. But don't, don't our lens have to be a lot wider? Doesn't it have to include a whole lot of people? And again, let me give you an example somebody should include. Public Health Committee had a hearing back in December, up in Kensington. And I'll be honest with you, after about two hours, I was getting tired and hungry, and I was trying to figure out how to lean out the door a little bit. But then a young man stood up, about thirteen years old, lived in either probably Councilman Sanchez's or Councilman Squill's district, you know, they intersect up there. And he said that he's lucky because he gets a chance, he gets a ride to school every day. But as he's riding, some of his classmates are stepping over and around addicts laying on the sidewalk, needles stuck out of their neck. And he just says, you know, why is that right? What are you guys, what can you guys do about that? So what I would say to all of the members here, you know, we just don't have to answer to our friends here in the, in the industry. We have to answer to kids like that. He can't afford... He can't afford lobbyists. He can't threaten anybody in here. He's just a kid that wants to go to school. Don't we owe him too? Don't we owe him that maybe he can live a decent life up there and doesn't have to go through that chaos? Now, again, when there's a bill, when you're trying to kill a bill, you do the whole end of the world theory. We've heard it so many times. World's going to end, people aren't going to come to this city, we're going to fall, fall into the great abyss. And that's the kind of things we're kind of hearing out of this. And, you know, I always think back to Councilwoman Tascow, and I think it was during paid sick leave, who said, you know, many times I heard about the world ending, and Lord, here I sit, and the world hasn't ended. And if we pass this bill, the world hasn't ended, but it ended for 100 people a month. And it ended for their families, or at least a part of their families. That's who we should worry about. That's who should have the priority here, and that's what this vote will come down to, in my opinion, is priority. Now please, get me right, I don't think any of the 17 of us don't care about this issue. None of us want to see this happen. None of us want to see what's happening in Kensington. Nobody wants to see people on Chester Street with their dogs lying there. Nobody wants to see people dying. But are we going to do something? Even, and this is, this is not, I'll be the first one, because we've been, we've been real here, we've been telling the truth. We're not saying it's the solution, I'll keep repeating that. But it's something, we need to move forward, we need to show people that we're doing something substantive, and this is substantive. And if it saves 10, 20, 30% of those people, and I think it could, isn't that worth it? They're people's lives. And all we're asking, the pharmaceutical reps, is to work a little harder. Work a little harder to get into your meetings. Don't have to come in with pizza and steaks. And by the way, it must be more than pizza and steaks, because again, we're hearing from these high-priced restaurants, they're going to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's not about pizza and steaks and ham sandwiches, I guess. I don't know what it's about. It's pretty, it's pretty bad when the opponents can't even get their own story straight. And we've been straight, we've been saying the same thing the whole time. So, you know, I hate to put people on the spot, it's not my style. But after a while, you got to make a decision. You got to show, you got to take a stand on what is the most important thing. Some people are going to be upset with us, I understand that. You know, but there's a lot of people that, that we're going to help if we pass this bill, I truly believe it. And maybe there's little pieces, and it doesn't take effect for 180 days, so there's little pieces that maybe we can, we can work in. But, you know, we just have to think, why are these people fighting this bill so hard? Why are they fighting it that hard? Just because they can't bring a sandwich in? It's got to be more going than that. Or are they just trying to bully us? Or are they just trying to show that they're going to knock down anything that a city does? Well, you know, look, I wasn't a tough guy, but I hung around tough guys, I was smart enough to do that when I was a kid. And I know you stand up to bullies. And we got to stand up here, and we got to stand up for people. We got to stand up for those 100 people that die at you and their families. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, I'm sorry. One last thing. There's another group of people who's going to be looking at us and what we do today. And they're people that right now don't know who we are. Maybe don't even know City Council meets in Room 400 on a Thursday. And that may sound strange that they're looking at us now, but here's what I mean. If we pass this bill and it takes effect, there's going to be people who are going to go into a doctor's office, and because that doctor did not get any kind of enticement, he, he much more likely not to overprescribe. And instead of going down that hill, of getting in, of getting into addiction, in prostitution, in stealing, in lying in some doorway somewhere, and then possibly lying in, you know, in a cemetery someday, that, those people are going to just go about their lives, they're going to get the proper treatment, and they're going to go about their lives. And again, they don't know who we are. And maybe in two years, we're going to walk by that person on the street? Again, they don't know who we are, we don't know them, but we did something for them. We did something for them, and we owe them, we owe the people, we owe their families. And I'm, you know, I'm sorry to get emotional here, but this is important, and we got to make a choice. We got to make a choice of where, where we are. We're not trying to hurt anybody, and I don't think we'll hurt businesses here. I think this is all a lot of hooey. It's the same thing they do every time we try to do something for people. Businesses come in and say, we're going to end, we're going to be so anti-business, and we're sending the wrong message. What message are we sending to the people who are dying? I'm sorry, Mr. President. I urge, respectfully urge, all members of council to vote for this very, very reasonable bill. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Let me recognize Councilwoman, you want me to do, Councilwoman Bass first? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to first start by saying to my colleague just how proud I am of you for that speech. I don't know if that means anything, but I'm just really in awe of what you just said, because you really made the case as to why we should vote for this bill. This should be a no-brainer, there's not a whole lot to think about, when we have people dying on our sidewalks throughout the city at an enormous rate here in the city of Philadelphia. We have to do something. And we can't leave it up to industry to do something about a problem that they, they have taken a hands-off approach to. They have stepped away from this problem. They have done nothing, and all along could have done many, many, many things to address this issue. And so I just want to say that this has been quite an interesting process. Councilmember Greenlee and I have held this bill. We've held numerous meetings with the pharmaceutical industry and others. We've added some of their amendments, and we've hoped all along for some form of compromise, nothing. We could have proceeded in December, but in that same spirit of compromise, we held. Meanwhile, the same folks who asked us to work with them and ensured us, assured us that they would bring something back to the table if we held back in December, spent that time, rather than working with us, lobbying members of this body with claims of doom and destruction over an inability, inability to buy lunches and give gifts to doctors. Truth be told, we can point to doom and destruction happening right now in our city, although it's not as visible to most, because it's, as we say, in the cut. Outside and far away from our most, from most of our center-city sidewalks is the destruction that is occurring in the lives of people who have been on the receiving end of heavily-written prescriptions that have led us down this path. We didn't arrive here by some sort of mistake or happenstance. In a legislative body, in which we always say, we put people in front of profits, I don't see how we can vote against this bill. I want to ask that members vote their conscience and vote what makes sense. I asked the members to vote for this bill, it's the right thing to do, it is going to make a difference, and it's going to be on the right side of history. A couple of things I just wanted to address besides that. One of the speakers on behalf of the industry said that they were committed on this issue. While I haven't seen it, Councilwoman Greenlee hasn't seen it, the city of Philadelphia isn't seeing it. We don't see any commitment to this city in terms of doing something, anything significant about the opioid or addictive drugs beyond opioids, because we know that opioids are on the way out and that other drugs are on the way in. And so what is being done? Absolutely nothing by industry. We have no support, no help for this crisis that we are dealing with every single day. The other thing I wanted to address was a letter that went around that said essentially that this bill doesn't do anything. This was from the industry. Well, if the bill doesn't do anything, what's the problem with passing it? If the bill doesn't mean anything, if it's such a, if it's such a marshmallow, what is the problem? And so, you know, Councilman, I am going to disagree with you on one thing you said, and that was that when we met with these folks, that we got played, I don't think we got played, we did our jobs, we did the right thing. We tried to find a spirit of compromise, we tried to work with folks who said they wanted to work with them. You can only take people at their word, and if their word isn't worth anything, then what can you do about that? And so we didn't get played, but a whole lot of other people got played. And so now it's time to vote and to see where folks are. And again, I just want to ask people, ask members of this body to vote their conscience and be on the right side of history. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. After communication with the Board of Ethics, as a member of the Independence Health Group Public Policy and External Affairs Advisory Board, I will be recusing myself and abstaining from voting on Bill Number 180888-A. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, Mr. President. Likewise, after communication with the Board of Ethics and as a member of the Independence Health Group Public Advisory and External Affairs Advisory Board, I will be recusing myself and abstaining from voting on Bill Number 180888-A. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilman Greenlee and Councilwoman Bass, because I saw firsthand, both on the committee side as Vice Chair of the committee and through this process, their willingness to sit down and talk about this issue. I did not engage in the debates early on, because this was not supposed to be an opioid bill. It was really looking at general rules and regulations. As someone who is at the epicenter of this opioid addiction, I can tell you, Councilwoman Greenlee's stories are true, and there are a lot of bad actors. At the hearings, I asked the administration to tell me what we were doing internally about how we police ourselves and regulate those doctors and those folks within our own ranks. Over the last four or five years, I have held dozens of hours of hearings talking about reform within our own behavioral health system. The federal government shut down four centers in my community for Medicaid fraud and over-prescribing, the federal government. What I asked the administration, and the Health Department in particular, is what are we doing so that before we ask the private market to do something, that we can look ourselves in the mirror and say, we're doing everything we can? Today, I don't feel comfortable that we're doing enough within ourselves and then asking the, the industry to do something. I totally support some form of registry, I totally support the notion that we should know who's in our market and what they are doing. I am uncomfortable at this given time, and I have faith in, in our ability, if this gets voted down today, to come back and look at, at something. But the administration has to tell and provide better direction around what we are asking people to do versus just telling people what they cannot do. On this legislation, after we put this out of committee, I got called from several medical providers in my district, people who normally don't engage with city government, and they asked me to come in, and I went into their medical facilities and I talked to them. And it was clear that there was a lot of misinformation, there continues to be misinformation. My concern and the reason, and we all look for the reason for why not, is I have asked for many reforms. I have doctors on, that are getting paid and reimbursed by the city, that are working seven hours, seven days a week, 12 hours a day, and I have no way of stopping them, because we don't have internal rules and regulations. And so what I'm asking is that we develop those in ourselves, and then we can ask the private market to do what we know can happen based on our own operational ability to monitor ourselves. And for that reason, as I said to both sponsors of the bill, because I support the spirit and the intent of this bill, for that reason, I will be voting no. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, I'm not going to dispute some of the criticism Councilwoman Sanchez has for the administration, she knows more about that, she's worked hard on it for years. I guess my question would be, what's that got to do with this bill? We're trying to do something here. I'll totally agree, and, and I think we said earlier, that we're, we're willing to work with whoever and however to, to help solve this problem. And if the administration hasn't done what they need to do, then they need to do it, and we need to keep working with them. But again, this is a very simple bill. A bill that experts have said can have an effect, can have an effect, maybe not overwhelming, but the, I guess with all due respect, if somebody else isn't doing right, then we don't do the right thing? I, I guess I don't understand that. I, I don't understand that logic. I think we, we should pass this bill today, in my opinion, and if we pass it, we should work on the issues Councilwoman Sanchez said, and any other issues that are out there. But I, I guess I don't understand being against this bill, because the, the administration hasn't done what they, they need to do. Because if, if that's true, and, and again, I'll take her at a word on that, because I, I, I'm not in, you know, an expert on that issue. But I, I guess I just don't understand that, that kind of argument. We got, we got something before us today that can have some effect on people in districts all over the city, and this problem isn't, one thing about addiction, it ain't discriminatory. There's, there's addict, there's people getting addicted in Summerton, there's people getting addicted in King Sessin, there's people getting addicted in Roxboro, there's addicted people in Point Breeze, there's people everywhere getting, getting addicted. And we're just trying to take a piece of this. And again, if other things need to be done, let's do them. But I don't think this, that's a reason not to be supportive of this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. With that, this bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman O'Neill. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker is abstaining. Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown is abstaining. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
The ayes are five, the nays are nine. Nays win, bill dies.
Mr. Decker, please read the title of 181044.
An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to convey to Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by 46th Street, Market Street, 48th Street, and Haverford Avenue for further conveyance.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green.
Hold, hold a second, Mr. Decker. Councilman, did you? Councilman Dom.
Yes, I just want to speak before, if it's possible. Too late?
You kind of need to do that before we start taking a vote.
Okay, fine.
I think you were called for your vote. Mr. Decker.
Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman O'Neill.
Also known as 4601 Market.
Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez. Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
I did put my light before we took the vote, so I will be voting no. I just wanted to...
I was slowing the peep over. I'll tell you what. I don't know, Mr. Decker, is a stickler for the rules. So as usual, Mr. Decker, with his serious, serious chief clerk skills. So if the body is okay with speeches during the course of this particular vote, we can do that. Are we in favor of that? All right, second, all in favor of that? Those opposed, no? Okay, let me, in all due respect, let me recognize Councilman Dom because he had wanted to speak initially.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to explain my reason for voting no on the sale of 4601 Market. And for the record, I'm in favor of the proposed use and the tenants. I'm against the price of $10 million for a building where we're going to lose $84 million when we had appraisals done showing the comparable land values of other sales in the area of $107, $108 a foot to $290 a foot, and we're selling this at $17 a foot. That's what I'm against, the value. And I also will tell you that, in my opinion, it's worth every bit of $20 million. And when an article was written in The Enquirer by Joe DiStefano, a developer, several called me about the property who weren't aware of it, one of them told me for the same deal, they would pay $20 million, but the RFP was too late. But it just demonstrates to me that we did not sell this at the right price. I like the uses. I love everything that's going on. It's just the wrong value, and that's why I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez.
And I've talked with Councilwoman Blackwell around this, and I made the question during the hearing in which I was present, not a member of public property, but present. I have a real concern about its future use and the opportunities that may exist where the City of Philadelphia will be funding some of the potential tenants and then paying rent in a deal where we're giving a massive reduction. And I've expressed this to the administration. We've had similar situations both at Athan Gerard, which is in your district, that I have not totally engaged because it's not in my district, but I think it sets a pattern if we're going to do as we do with our nonprofits when we do nominal transactions or reduce transactions for an end purpose, that they are clarified, justified, recorded, and transparent. The opportunity for many city-funded programs to be in that facility and that that not be reflected in the price or potential future leases is of a concern to me, and for that reason, I will vote no. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three points I'd like to make. First, I want to acknowledge what I witnessed, the extreme anguish in Councilwoman Blackwell in trying to find a fair, balanced decision towards this enormous behemoth enterprise. I, like Councilman Dom, do support the proposed use and the proposed tenants with one caveat. I live and work in a world that if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. And so I've learned just a few moments ago that Councilwoman Blackwell has in writing that the new entity with its new use and new tenants will not jeopardize or put out of business a 30-year-old entity known as Kirkbry, which has been in the business of taking care of homeless people, homeless children and families, and those who are suffering with drugs. So with that, I'm delighted to support in favor of this bill. Thank you.
Okay. So we have had a disruptive vote, so I'm going to ask someone to give me a motion to reconsider the vote so we can start all over again. Thank you. All in favor? Those opposed? Aye. Okay, Mr. Decker, let's proceed.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are, what do we have, 12, 13?
The ayes are 14, the nays are two.
Majority of members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, 180993.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation to grant to Pico Energy Company an easement for the purpose of installing transmission lines across a portion of the parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Gray's Avenue, Woodland Avenue, 56th Street, and 57th Street, commonly known as Doritas Playground.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and the nays are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 170467.
An ordinance amending Title II of the Philadelphia Code entitled City/County Consolidation by amending the Chief Assessment Officer's authorization to set standards for the valuation of properties for taxation purposes.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gimm. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kiana Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and the nays are zero. Majority of members present, voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Councilwoman Blackwell, did you wish to be recognized? Okay, thank you. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing the City Treasurer's office under the leadership of City Treasurer Rashia Johnson and the Reconciliation Task Force for the successful reconciliation of the city's bank accounts, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the enthusiastic adoption of this resolution. Thank you.
This bill moved enthusiastically second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and celebrating the Asian-American community in Philadelphia on the occasion of the 2019 Lunar New Year, introduced by Councilman Heenan.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
This bill moved appropriately second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing City Council's Committee on Aging to hold hearings on the potential for abuse in the guardianship appointment process and the financial burdens that such abuse could have on individuals being placed into guardianships, introduced by Councilman Johnson on behalf of Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
This bill moved appropriately second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Criminal Justice Reform to hold public hearings to examine adequate solutions in addressing the specific needs of incarcerated women, introduced by Councilman Johnson on behalf of Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
This bill moved appropriately second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring February 2 through 11, 2019, as National Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Very much, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
This bill moved appropriately second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing Chris Long for his incredible charitable work and congratulating him for winning the NFL's 2018 Walter Payton Man of the Year Award, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
This bill moved appropriately second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the Boy Scouts of America's 109th anniversary, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
This bill moved appropriately second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring that the third week of March shall be Martial Arts Week in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
This bill moved appropriately second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage counter, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Speech is on behalf of the minority. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the Scouts and Cub Scouts, who are celebrating 109 years of successful leadership, there is a luncheon and briefing on their many programs that they have in the City of Philadelphia, and all council members and all staff and all other interested parties are invited, starting right after council session with a lunch provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Speech is on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to take a moment to recognize and congratulate a very special young man who has been working in my office for the past two years. I don't see him around, so I don't know if he's come downstairs. But this young man came to my office as an intern in January of 2017 after being referred by a gentleman who is my good friend and I consider him to be a dean of local and state politics, and that was Joe McLaughlin at Temple University. And I hold Joe in very high esteem, and when he told me that this young man was one of the brightest in his class, my interest was piqued, and he definitely did not disappoint. He has shown impressive grit, problem-solving, and commitment. In May 2017, he became a full-time constituent service representative in the office, helping to address issues associated with residents throughout the 9th District, and he did it with patience and passion and compassion. As further evidence of his civic engagement, I was immediately impressed when I found out that he was one of those inside-of-the-arena guys instead of pointing at a system to talk about what was wrong, that he was a committee person in the 36th Ward and president of the Friends of Lanier Playground in Gray's Ferry at the tender age of 25. Councilman Greenlee, I know you respect that kind of engagement at such a very, very young age. Given his intellect and drive, we knew it was only a matter of time before he moved on to bigger and better things. And sure enough, he was snatched up by the mayor's office, and he is going to be the Assistant Chief of Staff in the office of the mayor, and tomorrow will be his last day. While I am sad to lose him, his name is Brian, but we call him the senator in our office. When we get together as a staff, we salute you, Brian Clinton. No relation to the Clintons, we know, but he is Brian Clinton. Thank you for your hard work, your integrity, and your commitment to our people. Congratulations as you move onward and upward. And as I told you yesterday, no matter where you go or how high you get, don't you forget the people on the ground who we are all here to serve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today to give a thank you to one of our colleagues, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson. We passed a bill today dealing with changing all these pipes. Pico has to for one of these old, small, like block-long playgrounds that I wondered why I forgot it. I found out after we went so far that it wasn't my district, it was his. You know how it is sometimes during your line of these... And when we went to him and said, "Look, we got a hearing and all of that," and he said, "Oh, yeah, that's fine. I know exactly where you mean," and he's been just wonderful about it. Everybody doesn't always feel that way when you crossing that line. So I want to say to him, "Thank you very much. We try to do the right thing, and we're very, very grateful for the support." Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I want to thank the gentle lady from the 3rd Councilmatic District, and what else was I going to say? That's Janie Blackwell. Any of your other colleagues, please make sure you contact me before you come into the 2nd Councilmatic District.
That's funny. Well, let's quit while we're ahead on a happy note. So with that, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, February 14, 2019, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. This bill moved appropriately second, that council stand adjourn until Thursday, February 14, 2019, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.